I am here.
Okay, well, I guess we could go ahead and start then. So first up, I believe is the Pledge of Allegiance. Stand and say, do that.
Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all. Jana, if we could get roll call, please.
Ms. Buco?
Present.
Mr. Eder?
Here.
Mr. Flynn?
Here.
Mr. Kessler?
Here.
Mr. Reitman?
Here.
Okay, um, next up is approval of the agenda. Can I get a, um...
I motion to approve the agenda.
A motion. Thank you, George.
I will second that.
How about a second?
I will second.
Jana?
Mr. Eder?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Mr. Reitman?
Yes.
Ms. Buco?
Yes. And then, um, approval of the minutes from our last meeting, which were, which was held January 20th of this year. Can I get a...
I'll motion to approve the minutes as written.
I'll second it.
Who seconded it?
I did, I did.
George.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Mr. Reitman?
Yes.
Ms. Buco?
Yes.
Mr. Eder?
Abstain.
Okay, um, public hearing for Sims number 87-08, Governor's Hill, U.S. Bank sign, um, review of a final development plan modification for an amended application for approval of a building sign larger than previously approved for the top of the southern building facade on Governor's Hill Drive. I guess first up, if we could hear from staff, Brian?
Yes, um, good evening. Thank you. Brian Snyder, Hamilton County Planning and Development. The, um, hearing today is for a final development plan modification for case Sims 87-8. The site, um, that you have, um, I believe in your packet, and I apologize, I don't have a, um, screen to share on this case, um, but you do have some photos in the, uh, site, um, map in your packet. This is, uh, two kind of mirrored shaped buildings that are surrounded by Governor's Hill, um, Mason Road, and Chapel Square Drive. This, the history of this site goes back to the eighties. Um, it was originally zoned for planned retail, but was not developed for that. There were a number of other developments along the interstate that were developed under that plan, but this site remained vacant until it was rezoned in 1987 to double O planned office. The entire site has been considered, um, for many final development plans, um, since it was approved. One of them included a sign plan. Um, the sign plan for the entire development did not show building signage on this site. Um, it did show the two address, exempt address signs on the penthouses of both buildings. Um, that was the way that the site was built, and then over the years, a number of final development plan modifications for just this site have been considered and approved by the commission, including, um, the two existing permitted signs, um, for these two buildings. Um, the north building is permitted, uh, a 200 square foot sign for what was then the great, uh, or the Art Institute. Um, I don't believe it was installed at 200 square feet. Uh, Mr. Meyer can explain the, the actual sizes. I know he has the numbers for those. Um, but that was what was approved by the zoning commission was a 200 square foot sign for the northern building. And then there was a 63, uh, or a 65 square foot, uh, power net sign that was approved for the southern building. And that was approved fairly recently, um, in 2014, I believe, um, by this, by the Sims Township Zoning Commission, by this commission. The applicant is now requesting to replace that 65 square foot building sign with a larger sign. Um, I believe the staff report said it was 100.8, but the graphics that we have actually show it being 104.82 square feet. The, the letter said 100.8 and the, the graphics show 104.8 square feet. So I think it's 104.8 per the graphics that were submitted. Um, that's the request for, uh, that building. The staff report does show the, um, permitted sign sizes for office developments. If this weren't in a planned district, it would be permitted 248 square feet of building signage per building, um, for a total of over 500 square feet of, I'm sorry, just under 500 square feet of building signage for the two buildings, for the one double O planned office site. If this were approved, um, and the applicant is proposing to install a 100.82 square, 104.82 square foot sign on the northern building, uh, where they're permitted a 200, um, square foot sign. So the two signs together would be, would be 209 square feet approximately, where, um, almost 500 square feet is permitted. So it'd be well under what the office district would allow for these two buildings. Um, so, and then...
Brian, did you, did you mean 309 square feet?
No, the two, the 104.8 square foot sign, they're putting, they're proposing to put two of them on the building. They've got a permit to put the one on the northern building where 200 square feet was allowed. That's not part of what is being considered tonight. The only reason I mention it is because the, the entire site is all one big double O planned office district. So just going by the amount of building signage for the entire development, um, they would be permitted almost 500 and they're showing 209 square feet approximately. Um, so it, there's no issue with compliance with the zoning resolution for either building. And, um, the previously permitted 65 square foot plus the 200 square feet is still larger than what they're proposing to put on the two buildings as per the current plans. So staff sees no issue with this, um, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does the, um, Brian, this is Todd Eder, does the address that's on the building that I'm seeing in the picture, does that count as signage?
No, that's exempt.
Which is 8805?
The address signs are exempt.
No matter what size?
Correct.
Okay.
Brian, uh, this is Jeff. A quick question. Are we approving just for this sign? So if a future tenant were to want to have a sign that did not meet the current double O standards, would they have to come back to the zoning commission, or the zoning commission?
So the commission has the option to, um, and this is the reason why I gave you all the numbers for the entire double O planned office site, because you can, as a commission, um, grant the sign on the southern building with the condition that the northern building be the same size, that the, basically they both be 104.8. Or you can just take this southern building by itself and grant the, the requested or, or consider granting the requested 104 square foot sign and leave the northern building completely alone, which would allow them in the future to go up to 200 square feet, um, because that's what's currently approved. The most recent approval for building signage for the northern building was for 200 square feet for the Art Institute. So as a commission, you can, you have the choice to consider this all as one request, um, or I'm sorry, all as one, um, sign plan for the entire site, or you can just single out this building and consider this building by itself. It's up to you.
So I guess my, my question is specific. So this is for a U.S. Bank sign. If in five years, U.S. Bank's no longer there and, you know, Jeff's, uh, you know, Bar and Grill is there, can Jeff's Bar and Grill, uh, use the same sign, um, size? Or do we have, or would I have to go back to the zoning commission and seek approval?
No, you, once you approve a, a size of sign for a building, that, in a location, that size and that location can be used for any tenants. We would consider that to be similar to a face change.
Okay.
And it runs with the land and it runs, runs forever.
Yep.
So Brian, are you saying that we have the ability in this situation to lower the maximum signage? If we went from 500 to, if you take 104 times two?
And I, I wouldn't necessarily consider it like that. Um, whatever you, the, because this is a planned district and there was originally a sign plan that didn't show any building signage, um, every sign request has been considered a final development plan modification. Um, so whatever you approve is now the maximum for the site. So right now, they're, they're approved for a maximum of 200 on the northern building and 65 on the southern building, because that's what the commissions have approved in the past. And the, the purpose, the reason that, um, the applicant had to come to this meeting was because he wanted a larger sign than 65 on the southern building, which was what was approved. So every time that this commission approves a sign plan, that is the plan. And anything more than that requires a final development plan modification.
But I believe...
So are we verifying? Go ahead, Cynthia.
I'd say in your findings, you indicate that the northern building is not the subject of this discussion.
They do not need this approval for the northern building. That's right. They've already got a...
So how could, I understand that, but how could they, how could we then say the two have to be the smaller size?
Well, because you can, you can basically, um, condition this approval on the condition that the northern building be maintained.
Okay.
Brian, um, I'm a little confused. This is one sign on one of the facades. Will there be, because I think there's another facade here, is there not?
This is on the, the penthouse facade. This isn't on any of the actual front building facades. It's all the way up at the top.
Right, but does a penthouse have two, two different sides to it?
Um, there's two different buildings. Each one, they're mirrored buildings. They each have the same penthouse facing in different directions.
Yeah, but when I look at the aerial view, it seems to me that there are two sides on the penthouse.
Right, yes, because, I'm sorry, because it's a L-shaped building. That's right. This would only apply to the one where they're actually showing it.
Well, so, so they only want one sign facade at this point?
Correct.
But did they come back and then ask for a second sign facade?
That would require this commission to review and approve it.
Okay. Secondly, um, and this might be a John question, but, uh, does, does, uh, the app, do we know, does the same ownership own, uh, both buildings?
I, I, I believe that they do.
Okay. It's all the questions I had.
This is all one lot. Well, there's two lots, but the two buildings are all one lot.
Right.
Does it, does anybody else have any additional questions for Brian?
Brian, just one quick question. Todd, again, was this, this thing building that, I guess within the past year or so, that the applicant tried to change the signage from, I'm thinking of a different building within this area?
Um, on the front page of the staff report, 2019, um, in December of 2019, there was a hearing, and I believe it was continued, um, to consider a final development plan modification for freestanding signage at the entrances.
Okay, yes.
That time was to change the kind of ground mounted monument signs to a larger, taller, um, freestanding sign, and that was ultimately denied.
Okay. Well, if no one has any further questions from Brian, we'd like to hear from the applicant. Um, John, if you could state your name and address, that would be great.
My name is John Meyer. Uh, address, uh, John Meyer with Ray Meyer Sign Company, address 8942 Glendale Milford Road, Loveland, Ohio 45140. Uh, basically, and just for clarification, um, I know the staff report says U.S. Bank. It's actually Union Savings Bank, uh, just for clarification, because there is, there is a U.S. Bank. So, um, just to make sure everyone's clear on that. Um, and both buildings are owned by Union Savings Bank. They've recently purchased them. So we are asking for a minor modification or a modification change of development plan to allow a second sign or a larger sign that was previously approved on the 8805 building, um, at 100. And actually, Brian, I know the plan says 104.8, but when Tom, when Tom calculated it down at, at the permit desk, um, he calculated it at 100.8, um, and I think that's because he boxed in, um, the logo and then boxed in his straight line lettering, because the logo is a little bit bigger than Union Savings Bank. So what we're asking for is basically the exact same size sign that has been approved with, with a permit for the 8845 building, which would be whether you're going to call it 100.8 or 104. Both signs are going to mirror each other and it's basically going to be on the same, um, if you can, if you look at the aerial of the building, it's going to be on the same facades of each building, basically. His, historically, I did do the sign for Art Institute of Ohio. Uh, we were granted 200 square feet for that sign, but, um, real, uh, what was actually permitted was a, permitted was 192 square feet. So it was actually, that sign was smaller than what was previously approved. Um, and then also you can look at the numbers. The, uh, Union Savings Bank signage is 100.4, which is quite a bit less than what the Art Institute sign, which was 192 square feet. Uh, it's, it's much smaller. And, and, and to answer, George, your question, if you looked at the different, there are different facades up there on those buildings, but from a sign standpoint, I don't think anyone would ever put a sign up there, because they don't really face anything. You really can't see them, um, from those facades from the ground. So, you know, basically that's what we're asking. We're just asking for two identical sized signs on the similar or the mirrored image facade of the, uh, of the, of the buildings. You know, we've already been permitted for 8845, and we're just looking to get the 100.8 or 100, uh, 104 mirrored image type sign on the 8845 facade to replace the power net sign that's up there now.
Thank you, John. Um, quick question. You mentioned that Union Savings Bank purchased both buildings. Are they going to occupy both of them, or will there be additional tenants?
Um, there's still additional tenants and there were some, some previous, from what I understand, I, I can't answer that, um, exactly, because I, I'm not sure, but I know there's tenants still in one of the buildings. So I still think they plan on using tenants in them, but, um, I think it's my understanding that, that, uh, at, at some point in time, they probably will be using both buildings for Union Savings Bank.
Okay. Part of the reason I ask is whether or not down the road, they're going to ask for signage for other tenants in the building. I know the, um, request that was made for the monument signs to be larger was because the previous owner said they couldn't fit them all on there in a visible manner, et cetera, et cetera. So that's part of my question. The other question, just real quickly for clarification, and I don't mean to be hopping around, but Brian, I'm looking at this report, and it says the proposed use is to put a new 200 square foot Union Savings Bank sign where the Art Institute one was, but I'm hearing that we're going to have two matching signs. So which is it?
Yeah, I apologize. I didn't have all the, um, all the facts when the staff report was completed. Um, I have seen the permit and I, I talked to Mr. Meyer today, and I verified what we discussed, that the sign was 100, um, as he stated, 100.8 square feet, not 200 square feet.
Okay, and that's where the 209 is coming from. That's why I thought it was 300. Okay.
Yes, sorry.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Does anybody else have questions for Mr. Meyer?
Um, I, I do, uh, just to, uh, and hopefully you know the answer to this. Uh, this is Jeff, by the way. Uh, do you know whether these signs are going to be visible from any residential, uh, locations? You know, in eyesight?
And you're asking me that question?
Uh, well, either you and/or Brian, I guess, if either of you know, uh, any details on that.
There are, there are two houses that still face Mason Road, right across the street from this. I mean, they, they can see the signs. They can see the whole building, the whole parking lot. I mean, the parking lot is what's right across the street from them. You know, the last two houses on Mason that actually face Mason.
Mm-hmm. And, and are these signs going to be, uh, illuminated, you know, during the entire evening, or is there a cutoff point?
Well, I, I mean, as of now, I, I mean, I, I, and I'm not, I can't speak for Power Net, but I'm assuming that, um, they're typically, you have a couple of different options. You can, you can have them on a photo cell, which keeps them on during the nighttime hours, or it can be on a timer that regulates when they go on, when they go off. So I think, if I'm not mistaken, the Power Net sign that's up there now, I was just up on that roof this afternoon, it does have a photo cell attached to it, so that sign would be going on or would be on during the, the nighttime hours. The existing sign.
Mm-hmm. That's a much, you know, I don't know, the, the amount of lumens generated from that seems to be, would be a lot smaller than, than what you'd anticipate from, at least I'd anticipate from the sign. Is that accurate?
Lumens from what? From, from...
I mean, but the, the amount of light that's being generated from the Power Net sign is going to be much smaller than the amount of light generated from this sign.
Um, I would, I wouldn't necessarily say that, because, um, I mean, if you look at the letters themselves, they're not, especially since the Union Savings Bank letters are smaller, um, I don't know what the exact size of the, the Power Net letters are. And they're all low voltage, so it's not like high powered neon or anything like that, and the faces are blue. Um, so they're not, nothing's white. White is going to obviously cast a brighter light. So I don't think it would be that much different than what was up there now.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Um, do we have anyone from, I, I noticed in the documents that apparently the homes and other buildings surrounding this were given notice. Has, is anybody here at the hearing virtually? Nope. Okay, I'll take that as a no. So at this point, I guess we will close the public portion of the meeting and have any discussion amongst the committee members.
I'm certainly in favor of the proposed sign. The only question I have is do, whether or not we want to, uh, have a condition approving it in conjunction with the north building, which is currently permitted for 100-ish square footage.
I think that makes some sense. Anybody else?
So...
So Brian, could, could you clarify that if we wanted to basically make 109 on each sign the new cap, that that would be it going forward, and any changes would be, they would be required to come in and request authorization?
If, if that's the position of the commission, yes, you can do that.
Okay. Go ahead, George. I'm sorry.
I'm just trying to understand, um, what we're saying. We're saying that both buildings can only have one sign, no larger than 109 square feet. Is that, is that what the direction?
I think it's, 101 is probably better, because it's a, it's 100.8, as Mr. Meyer stated. If the, um, plans examiner did a more detailed, um, review of this initiative, permit for 100...
Yeah.
Point eight.
101.
So 101 would be good. Yes, as I stated, if the commission's comfortable with having 200 on that, on the northern building and 100 on the southern building, you can just do that. Just approve 100 for this building and let the decision for the 200 on the northern building stand. Or you can commit, you can condition this approval on the condition that the northern building be limited to 100. It's completely up to the commission.
I think, from my perspective, it would seem like the, the smallest amount of square footage, the, the better, and let a future tenant come back and request something further.
Agreed.
I agree.
I guess I can't speak unless you reopen the, the, the public hearing. Is that correct?
Well, go, go ahead, John. You're, you're granted, you're granted permission.
Yeah, so, I mean, I could pretty much, I, I would have to say, since, since the, the owners of the buildings are the ones putting the signs up, I mean, I can't imagine them ever taking down their signs and letting someone else put a sign up. So I don't think that would be a problem by limiting the, the amount of signage for both locations at 101 square feet. But I guess my question would be, if somebody came back, and, and just say, and like I said, I can never imagine this happening, because that, this is their corporate headquarters now, um, that would they be, if the sign on the 8845 building was removed and somebody knew that past history that the planning commission had approved a 200 square foot sign, where would the, and I'm sure, who knows if that would ever happen 10 years from now, you have a new zoning commission. Would that be a precedent then, that since a 200 square foot sign was approved previously, that someone would be, um, possibly able to get that 200 square feet again down the road?
Well, they can make that argument, but then, but at that point, they're in front of a, a, either us or probably a different board.
Sure.
And then they can make that argument, and whether or not the board agrees with them at that time, then, then away you go.
Okay.
I mean, uh, when I look at it, John, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know, I guess you could go taller, but you're not going to get too much more of a sign on that facade.
No, you're not, and, and, and you're true, because, I mean, the way you need to get a sign up there, you still want to be able to see it from Governor's Hill. And if you, if you got too low on that facade, you start blocking the signage. And, and, and we actually, when we did the Art Institute of Cincinnati, or of, of Ohio, we, we put a banner up there and positioned it so you could see it from Governor's Hill. So you, like you said, you can't get much, the, the, the Art Institute of Cincinnati, of Ohio Cincinnati was a much larger sign, and it was put up there that you could see it from Governor's Hill, but, you know, you got to position it the right way. Otherwise, you're going to block half the sign. And that's why Union Savings Bank is, is kind of, they do have a logo that they use, which is a stacked logo, and they decided to go this one liner, because it can be held up and, and not worry about being blocked in any way.
Yeah, so I think, and I'm not trying to speak for my, my colleagues, but I think what their concern is, is that, um, if we don't limit it to what we're seeing in front of us now, then the next thing we know, there'd be, uh, XYZ Corp leasing 30,000 square feet, uh, of the one building, and then wants to come in and put a sign on the glass, um, identifying their company on the glass. And they can do that, because we're clearly under what is currently permitted for the signage, square footage for these buildings.
Sure, understand, but I think they still, and, and Brian can, 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 correct me if I'm wrong, they still have to come before you and get that additional sign on the glass. So you still have that, that ability to, to deny another sign up there.
There's no, no doubt, but, but when we, especially when we, if we put on here no more than 100 per building, then yes, they absolutely have to come back.
Exactly.
Right. So how, how big is the, uh, the sign again?
101 square feet.
101 square feet. So, um, I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, the sign with a maximum of 101 square feet per building at 8805 and 8845 Governor's Hill Drive. On the south side of Governor's Hill Drive, west of Mason and north of Chapel, Chapel Square Drive.
Does anybody want to second that motion?
I'll second. Go ahead.
I, I just wanted, uh, I think Brian's going to have to help us write it, because I don't think that covers everything, is what we want to state.
Right, I mean, that was pretty good. I had written something down that was, that's more like, um, standard condition language, but it's pretty similar. I just wrote that both buildings within the double O planned office district shall be limited to a maximum of 101 square feet of building mounted signage located as shown on the submitted plans.
I'd be okay with revising my motion to reflect that language.
I'll continue with my second of the motion.
Jana, can we... Jana, can we get a roll call?
Ms. Buco?
Yes.
Mr. Etter? Was that a yes?
Sorry, yes, yes, yeah.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Mr. Reitman?
Yes.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, John.
All right, thank you very much, guys.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
All right, you too. Have, have a great evening. Thanks. George, what are we going to do about those muskies?
We'll be all right. Don't worry about it. I'm not getting rid of the coat, okay?
I hear you. All right, see you, guys.
See you.
Okay, we'll move on to old business. Is, is there any old business?
I don't have any. None?
Was that a none, Jana?
None.
Okay, any new business?
We have a meeting next month.
Yes, we do.
Okay, I think it's April twenty-first?
Yes.
You already sent that out, Jana?
I sent, are you, uh, trying to give you a heads up? Are you planning your vacation, George?
Will that be Zoom or live?
Probably Zoom.
Everything will probably, everything is allowed to be Zoom until July, right, Jana?
Yes.
Okay. Any administrative matters we need to cover?
No.
Can I get a motion for adjournment then?
I will motion that we adjourn, and with great sadness, because I like seeing all you people and we're going to have to end. So.
George, I can cut off my video and there'll be a screen there and you can just stay, stay my picture, you know, all night long, if you'd like.
George is craving social interaction.
That's beautiful. Thank you.
Ah, sure.
Okay, did we, did we get a motion to adjourn?
I motioned, we need a second, I think.
I'll second.
Okay, can I? Jana?
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Mr. Reichman?
Yes.
Ms. Buco?
Yes.
Mr. Etter?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Bye.
Take care, everyone.
Bye, everybody.